Bean.
All right, I'd like to call to order the Hinkley Township special meeting on Tuesday, December 20th at four o'clock PM. All trustees are in attendance with fiscal officer Catherine Wood and we have Police Chief Grosebock, Service Superintendent Bahari and Suzanne Peterlin. This is our organizational work session, so that's the purpose for today. And we will start, I'm going to start by sharing my screen, so everyone at home has this in front of them. You're with me one second. Do we know who's on there? Is there anybody we can confirm that they can hear us?
I listen to my computer.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So typically what we do is we just read through this trustees, one page at a time. One trustee takes one page next, trustee gets next page, so on and so forth. So if you are all in agreement, I will just go ahead and move forward. And wanted to confirm that we want to make sure that our first, or sorry, first business is Chairman of the Board. We have a nomination for Chairman of the Board.
I nominate Jack Sweattick.
All right. I agree with that. And Vice Chairman of the Board.
I nominate Monique Asher.
Okay, very good. And are we comfortable with the first Tuesday and the third Tuesday of every month at 6:30 PM?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, very good. And we will just keep going through. We keep, make sure we have 24 hour notice. That we have, everything's passed by two favorable votes or two negative. People ask me all the time, what if someone recuses themselves and you have one negative and one positive, then it does not pass. We have advanced notice for public business. That is typical. Posting, do you have any changes to the posting first section about posting a copy of the schedule? I do not. Fiscal Officer Pay. Trustee Compensation. These are all outlined by Higher Rights Code. Elected officials and eligible employees are compensated according to IRS mileage. Any changes to travel expenditures for electives?
I do not.
No.
Okay. And. Keep going. I'm actually going to skip through some of this. If you feel that you're comfortable with it or you don't, you would like to make a change, please let me know. We've got $50 per occasion for rental of Hinkley Township. For residents only, for the buildings, with a $50 deposit. Everyone in agreement to maintain that?
Yes.
Same with Rogers Park?
Yes.
Very good. Do we, do we add the fire station base? We want to put that in here?
Yeah. I thought we added that, or did we just add it to the form and not the organizational? Suzanne?
It's in the form and you.
Isn't that under admin building?
Building here, so that encompasses.
The whole thing, okay. Perfect. Okay, agreed. Um. Coffee and acrobatics for employees and residents are available for purchase on special occasions. Is everyone in agreement with that?
Yes.
And what about the zoning commission compensation schedule? Is everyone in agreement to maintain that?
Yes.
Okay. In the event of a regular meeting, work session, public hearing or training, let's see. Any changes to this language here for BZA? Or zoning commission? On page three.
I don't think the fourth paragraph is applicable at this point, no. The open position paragraph.
Oh, yeah, I'm taking those out.
Yeah, these are just, this is just an old document that we're working off of.
Okay.
It's actually the minutes from the 12/20, I'm sorry, the January meeting that we had, January 4th meeting. So are we comfortable with the member terms?
Yes.
Okay. And.
We're going to remove those elements at this point, right?
Correct.
And this one, we didn't have any alternatives at that point.
That is correct. It's on my agenda to talk about alternates tonight, so we'll have a better indication, hopefully, at the January 3rd meeting.
Who is the current?
Cindy.
That's right, Cindy. All right.
BZA, any issues with the BZA members and rates?
Suzanne, you, you talked about a matrix. What are you, what are you talking about? Everything that's on this matrix?
Yeah, so the BZA or the zoning commission kind of outlined what are they paid for meeting versus public hearing. I don't know if it would make it easier to be consistent or not. It's entirely up to you.
It seems like a lot more, I mean, they only have two. I mean, they only have two.
They have three.
Yeah.
Either way, it was just.
I don't need it to do their payroll, so I don't probably need this other matrix to be their payroll.
So are we comfortable with it staying the way it is? Okay. So moving on to BZA. We've got their compensation's $35 per hearing. $30 for continued hearing. Is that still the same language in our zoning fee schedule? Suzanne? Continued hearing.
That is something different.
Okay.
This is what they pay for each meeting. The fee schedule is.
I'm just making sure that the word continued hearing is coincides with the fee schedule that we just redid.
What's, you got it in front of you.
I do. Or do I?
Either way.
Yes, or extension, yep. Should we, do we want to put or extension?
Who's going to get how to say whether it's continued meeting or extended?
Okay. Very good. So is the board comfortable with the members and alternates? We have had changes, as you well know. Bill Budd came off as a member. Lindsay Rubel is a member now. Jo Calabro is up, but she would like to stay on. And Tom Schrader is the alternate. Is everyone comfortable with the BZA board?
Yes.
So Lindsay took Bill Budd's remaining term.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. Um, we added last year that we wanted them to complete Sunshine Law Training within the first three months of each term. We were very successful with that. I think that was a benefit to both boards. I'd like to keep that in there if you're in agreement.
Yeah, so the people. Who's up this year?
So Jo Calabro and then it would be Cindy would be the new board member.
Cindy, so do we want to make them do it again since they just did it like less than nine months ago?
Um. I mean, I think that that's probably a discussion for.
Well, it says within the first three months of each term.
Yeah. So she's right, they would have to do it again according to the work session, but we could, as, we could waive that at a regular trustee meeting and say that because they've already had it done.
Right.
Same with Tom, on the BZA, the alternate, Tom Schrader. It's not necessary for them to repeat that if they just did it. I think we had added language in there about.
Why don't you put it in the BZA and zoning commission organizational language?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Just put it in there.
Okay.
Specific to them, it'll get lost.
Okay, is everybody comfortable with that? Because they each have their own organizational meetings and minutes. Okay. Would you note that for me, Suzanne?
Thank you.
All right, members of the zoning commission, does the one education per year, is the compensation rate for that, is everyone comfortable with that?
Yes.
And Tom.
That should probably go in theirs as well then, no?
I believe it is in there, actually. Are we comfortable leaving Tom Zablottney as an independent contractor at $16 per hour? Not to exceed 120 hours per quarter?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And. The assistant zoning, I've read this today a couple times, like. What's the difference between the assistant zoning inspector, one position and what Tom's doing? Do we just keep it in there because he's an independent contractor? Okay. So are we comfortable with the 1550 per hour? All right, and then Tom Wilson is $1,400 per month. We comfortable with that?
Yes.
I'd actually like to see a slight increase in that.
Any discussion for pay increases? I'd like to go into executive session.
I was going to actually ask the exact same thing. And actually, while we're in executive session, we can talk about the next line too, if you are comfortable with that. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss employee compensation.
Second.
Second, if I sweat it. And I think we should do a roll call. So Astral? Yes. Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine's a yes. And Martha, we are going in at 4:12 PM.
Out of the executive session at four thirty one P M second. Yes.
Yes.
Augustine's a yes. And so we have decided to move forward with the zoning inspector position rate with a three percent increase. If that's of everyone's, is everyone in agreement on that?
Yes.
Okay, and we will do the same for administrative office zoning office manager.
With. Are we going to do that for zoning inspector one assistants only one?
Tom Sabatini is an independent contractor, so we're gonna leave him at sixteen unless you feel. Do some math here real quick.
You don't have one, so you might want to just leave that be. You're always.
Okay.
You know, when you need to hire someone, you can always.
Modify.
Modify these notes.
It's like forty eight cents more.
I will leave that one. I'm okay with that.
And the same will be for Judy, who's the recording secretary for zoning. She'll stay at the probably the rate she's at, but I think for employees will just. If everyone's in agreement, we'll just do three percent across the board.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we're going to continue on.
Can I interrupt something? Something I told Monique about. They asked the board's consideration to make Jackson and Lisa's position independent contractor positions. Only because. It would be easier for them to submit their time sheets. When they can, you know, when they feel like kind of like Judy and Tom do. And the other thing is they're paying into opers now. Yeah, they shouldn't really have to pay into opers. I mean, that's. That's a withhold an additional withholding for them. That.
He's building service time. Fifteen minutes at a crack.
No, not even that, because they're not even meeting the threshold of getting service.
Right, right.
They're paying into the pension plan. But you have to have a certain amount of. Hours worked and revenue in a month to even get a partial credit. So that way then they can deduct whatever, you know, I said, give them ten ninety nines. And they, and Jackson won't, but who knows if Lisa has. Because you'll get all your money back from the IRS, but I just ask consideration as to that.
I'm taking it off my list, Martha. I had it on my list.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. You're just, you stole my thunder, but it's okay.
I'm sorry.
It's, it's okay.
It was while we were doing duty and I don't know what else we're getting.
So you will take care of all that with their horns and everything.
Yeah, you know, we're gonna have another. We still need one more payroll. Would it be easier just to submit to me monthly or just in a way that works out with you guys' schedule rather than me harassing you?
Is that gonna mess with your cryptocurrency company?
I don't know, my nineteen dollars. I was gonna say, and this.
Can probably get like three cups of coffee with that, right?
Just wait till the end of the year and then you'll get a bigger check.
Half a tank of gas. You've got a good car.
And I think there was even a concern for Lisa when she. Wasn't it the pension? She knew, you know, she asked if she did have to pay in opers, because I think sometimes opers impacts. Some of your other investments and other things if you belong to a pension plan. And you may have another pension plan.
So what language are you proposing for the proctors?
I mean, you could add it to recorded meeting, recording secretary and. Meeting. Proctors.
Perfect.
It's the same amount, right?
I think the proctors are.
Fifteen.
Fifteen and the recording secretary sixteen.
Whatever you can break it down.
And are we allowing for the three percent on both of those positions?
Judy maintains her own rate, independent contractors maintain their own rates.
But this, the one that's in front of us right now is the trustee meeting recording secretary.
Correct, and Judy. Judy.
Is she sixteen an hour too?
Yeah.
Okay.
As an independent contractor.
Okay. Do we want to add that that's the fee for that independent contractor for zoning meetings? Because it's not in there right now. We have it listed for time.
Oh, you know, we had it in there when I was trying to get somebody to do the minutes. And that failed.
I went back and saw those meeting minutes. Never worked. Okay, so we're going to create a separate line for those factors to be paid. I think it's already in here somewhere. But it probably should be right here in administrative section. And then, Monique, I know you wanted to have conversation about, do we want to keep the administration office zoning assistant at? The fifteen dollars per hour and then have a conversation about what you gave to us right before the meeting? Just to have it in there, so.
Well, I mean, we can talk about that now, because I actually want to redefine that role, so it's no longer. The administrative office zoning office assistant.
Okay.
So you can see, gee, are you guys ready to talk about this now?
Yeah, and I think, but I think we should leave that there just in case at some point we need another assistant, just keep it in organizational meeting minutes. But maybe add the one that you presented us to the organizational meeting minutes as a separate line.
Okay, I don't have any concerns with that.
Okay, do you agree with that, Jack?
If you want to leave it in there as a placeholder, that's fine.
Perfect. All right, so what you've presented us, Monique, go ahead.
So what this is, is essentially redefining that role that Lynn is in right now. To instead of the administrative office zoning office assistant, the position could be the web developer or programmer. In the administration department and reports to the administrative liaison. And the basic responsibilities, including but not limited to, and Lynn did work on this with me. So I want to know everybody's thoughts on this. The web developer and programmer duties. Include but not limited to creative web designer responsible for design work using applicable software. Front end development using HTML, CSS and JavaScript, create interactive interactivity, including mouse overs and on screen validation and interactivity. Backend developers write code on the backend WordPress platforms. Update existing framework to apply to new posts, information and pictures as needed on a daily basis. Maneuver the code of the existing website to meet the needs of the township. Utilize plugin capabilities to show efficient utilization of website as well as security and existing plugin capabilities. Manage the admin duties of the website, including but not limited to ensuring backups are being done via site ground account. And also restoring if necessary, installing date updates after researching compatibility with WordPress and cross existing plugin platforms. Maintaining upkeep of website, including post files, media and activity logs. Incorporate Zoom uploading videos to YouTube and the website, ensure security of website with plugins and within the township requirements. Website archiving of the data with the retention schedules requirements. Website analytics, future additional plugin installations if deemed necessary, or if a better plugin is found to be beneficial to the website, including research installation updates, etc. Also, she will continue to be the recording secretary for the trustee work sessions. Stewardship of the Kimball disposal and recycling program. There will be public interaction with phone, emails and walk-ins, database management with the Excel spreadsheets, the document preparation, record retrieval and record keeping. And basically will be there. Be there to help assist. The administrative office and the zoning office when. Suzanne or Suzanne is not there or she's absent. We talked about the possibility of doing hybrid, so she could work from home. At times when she's doing updates to the website and doing meeting minutes. And we also did talk about extending the hours, so her being here maybe two days a week until five o'clock.
So two things come to mind. The first one is the hybrid conversation was something we talked about within the new handbook slash manual.
Yep.
And that was not. Was not embraced, but I think it should be. I think that definitely is an option for our staff to utilize their laptops and work remotely. So I would love to see that for her. The only other thing that I have an issue with is the position title. I feel like she's doing a lot more than just being the web developer. With the Kimball and all the recording secretary work, I mean, she's. I just feel like maybe the title should be a little different. That's just my.
Maybe administrative adjunct slash web administrator, something like that.
Or communications administrator or something, yeah, web. But I think you did a great job and it. It fits her and what she's doing, and I'm really happy to see a position created based on a phenomenal employee.
Yeah, I think this goes more to her skills and what she has been doing for the township. You know, we talked about Kimball, so it's obviously still on here because Kimball is, Lynn feels it's, you know, maybe twenty five percent. Of the role, whereas when she was hired, she felt and I felt also that that was like the primary role was Kimball. And at the end of the day, Kimball and that we know that we have busier times than others, but for the most part, it's only twenty five percent of that job. I think that we were able to eliminate some things this year that were on our plate that didn't need to be with Kimball. So it has freed up more time to do this with the website, you know, she, she said that to us in her interview, that that's something that is her passion, that she really wanted to be involved with. And you can see it, you can see it with her working on it, and she's good at it. So I think she wants to kind of embrace more of that role, and I think that this will continue to develop. This role, but I just thought this would be a good place to start with us this year or in twenty twenty three to. Just update the description and what that role is.
We've come a long way. This role is a person for a long time that wouldn't even use a computer and then ended up using a computer and being fine with it.
I agree.
Then another person that came in and said, I want to use the computer for everything, and another person said, let's do the website. So it's just fun to see the evolution of it. And like I said, I think that you designed it so it fits her very well.
So is that the only recommendations that you guys are recommending is changing the position?
Yeah.
And that hybrid.
And maintain, well, we, I just think that.
I'm still not in favor of hybrid. I think those are things that can be accomplished up here while still providing access for. Any of the residents that stop and, you know.
I, I don't disagree with that, Jack, but I think she's thinking more hybrid when she's at home and something needs to be updated on the website. And it's only going to be a fifteen minute thing versus having to drive to the office to do something like that. I think that was the thought with that.
Something like that I could understand, but to actually, you know, take a four hour period and work, work from home to, while things are uploading, no, then I wouldn't be in favor of that.
Well, why don't we just take it out for right now until we get our handbook done? Because right now they're not going to coincide the way the handbooks put together.
With the, would you guys like to adjourn to executive session to discuss the pay that I have just that I've suggested?
I have no problem with the pay you have suggested.
Martha was comfortable with it?
It's on the second page.
It's the last.
Starting there.
Starting there.
Yeah.
You're comfortable with that?
Yeah.
So this would be a base pay of eighteen dollars an hour with a cap of twenty one dollars an hour for this role.
Perfect, okay. And moving right along, we have Suzanne acting as assistant zoning inspector. In the event that the zoning inspector is not available for signing permits, is everyone in agreement on that? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're top, top of page five of nine. The fee structures for graves, six twenty five and an extra two seventy five will be charged if funeral falls on a weekend or holiday, cremations, two hundred and extra seventy five dollars that they're charged will be charged for weekends or holidays. Any changes with that?
Does that say that on here? Oh, it does say that. I was on the wrong page. Yes, because we just updated that this year, right?
Are these the updated fees?
Yeah. And you had a suggestion, Suzanne, on the fee structure?
Oh, I just up for discussion.
Okay. We talked about potentially increasing it. What was your suggestion?
Fifty dollars.
To six seventy five?
No, 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 the open and close are. Accurate, I believe.
Okay, which, which one did you?
Way in on that.
Which one were you looking at?
The prices for the grave sites.
Okay. So if everyone's in agreement for the first two paragraphs, I'll move on to the third one.
Yes.
And she would like to see an increase.
To four fifty.
I'm sorry, the first paragraph, not the first.
Non-resident, what you mean, or I'm sorry.
Is everyone in agreement to four fifty?
Yeah.
Yes, where is the non-resident in?
Never mind, I didn't say that.
We don't, we don't have this conversation.
I didn't hear of that.
And the footer is at fifty dollars per cubic foot. Is that still pretty accurate, Mike? Okay, is everyone in agreement on that?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Bahari, do you still want to be the stormwater management coordinator?
One of his favorite jobs.
Yes.
The grave site. Four fifty and then cremation, were you increasing?
Oh, yes, it's a three hundred, if that, if everyone's in agreement.
Yes.
Thank you, Suzanne. Good night. Skilled, unskilled and skilled labor rates range from ten dollars to thirty dollars per hour. Everyone in agreement on that?
Yes.
Yes. Chief Grossenbaum, we'll get an. Um, to 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 Chief Gross and Bob, we'll get an increase of three percent?
Correct.
Very good. And then what about the positions for the rest of the firemen? Assume, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I'd like, do you see, does this where I bring that up?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to, with going three men staffing and having leadership on, I'd like to, when the lieutenant is not in charge, I'd like to see a OIC uh the the senior firefighter again, OIC rate and the OIC rates would be at eighteen ninety. Like forty-six cents above what the three percent would be for the medic in charge. And that that OIC would be in charge of running the shift, uh ensuring that all duties, responsibilities, everything else, the scene management, everything like that to be in charge.
Would take the place of lieutenant?
Yeah, when there's not a lieutenant in charge.
What's the lieutenant's rate?
Lieutenant's rate is nineteen thirty-one with the raise.
Okay.
They take out, we talked about this and they are assuming all of the responsibility of the lieutenant. Um, so I mean, I know the police, the police do the OIC also.
I with their all the, it's basically all the FTOs, the ones that are training the new members now, when when there's no lieutenant on shift, that's who the new that we have, uh, when they get sworn in and start working during their training period, that's who's the could the OICs now. There there's some type, you know, they're they're the ones with experience running the shift.
That's the same in the police department. Right?
Mm-hmm.
There. I I he- I I hear what you're saying, but they're not doing, they're not performing all the functions of a lieutenant.
No, the lieutenants have the other duties. That's why we're not making them a full lieutenant pay rate. They're still in charge of that shift of making sure all the shift duties and there if there's a fire scene or medical, they're the ones.
So who is the lowest paid individual that can assume the OIC?
The firefighter paramedic.
And his current rate is?
Eighteen.
With the five percent.
The three percent.
Or sorry, three.
The firefighter medic is eighteen fifty-four now.
Okay. All right, I'm okay.
Okay.
And actually, Martha, I forgot to tell you, if you go back really quick, Marcus Fisher's name spelled wrong. His last name is F I S C H E R. All right, so if everyone's in agreement, we'll add the OIC at eighteen ninety.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, very good. And moving right along, we have the incentive uh language that um trustee Ashwell, is this the new language?
I was just adopted that.
Yeah, I took it from that.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so we would incorporate that and if everyone's in agreement.
Is that been effective?
Yes, it has been effective. Yeah, it definitely has. I've seen guys that have been only doing four shifts, picking up sometimes up to six in a month.
What's the minimum?
They have the four shifts in one.
Okay.
Could you send this to the um? Have you shared this with the ranger team?
No, I have not, but I will.
Rich, Rich face called me.
Okay.
And I said I would send it to him.
Sure.
Maybe.
And actually, if you could share it with Brian Gush and Sharon Tom, sure. Thank you. All right, so we moving right along, we've got the one-year probationary period.
The the only modification I want to change is um from the six months to after they, after three months, they're they're functioning as a full-fledged member of the shift. They've gone through all their training requirements and all that. So I'd like to see them be bumped up to their full pay rate from fourteen thirty-five to either the EMT pay rate or the parabenic pay rate after the three months opposed to the six months.
Remove them from the cadet.
The cadet pay, I'm sorry. Keep them on the one-year probationary period, but I'd like to see them bumped up to their full pay uh because they've gone through all the training periods after three months and they're now will be a third member of the shift and responsible for potentially be, you know, patient care going inside. So I think they should be bumped up to their their full, their full pay rate.
Subject to your decision.
My discretion, yes.
I like that.
But the issue I have with this is that it's, if they're there for six months, how much time do they actually work?
So they're, we, they've been averaging, uh, we, because we looked into it, they're they're getting, they're, a lot of the guys are doing eight, eight, nine shifts a month. Eight-hour shifts.
I'd rather see it based on that than
Oh, hourly?
Than a, you know, saying a year or six months. I'd rather see saying after X number of shifts.
Uh, uh, number of shifts or hours. I'd I'd go with hours if you're okay with that. Sure. Can I get back to you on the hours?
Wasn't it um?
It was two eighty, but I want to.
Wasn't that what I suggest? Like, and Sean said it's actually three months.
Yeah, it you.
I think it was.
I I like that, Jen. I think that's good is to do hours and I think two eighty to three hundred hours would be a good, they, I mean, that, I mean, we should know by then if they're going to even make it past
Yeah.
The probationary period on that.
And that was the, that was um kind of where we started this conversation is knowing, are they going to cut it or are they not going to cut it? And that's why we had talked about it because I think, was it six months? And I said, well, what if we went to hours and Sean did the math?
The hour and it was basically the three months and that's about two hundred and eighty hours and that's, I think that's a fair because I think, I mean, I need the guys to get it.
You're thinking that roughly equates to three months?
Yeah, we're roughly about three months is what we, when we worked on the average of the members that were on the cadet status at that time. The ones that were getting the hours in, but it should be based, I mean, that gets them to come in and put more hours in right away to get them moved off.
Yeah.
Yep.
Do you want to get back to us with a number? Do you?
Yeah, I'll let me, let me finalize the numbers if you wouldn't mind, please.
Jess, what was it? Was it two eighty that we said?
It was two eighty.
Twenty-three shifts?
There would be Ada, let me, let me get back to you. I don't remember. I have notes in my office. So let me, let me get back to you.
Um, Chief, I'm going to have you put your microphone on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
All right, perfect. Um, moving right along, we've got new members to the fire department with five or more years of experience will be compensated.
I'd like to just eliminate that based on the, based on the previous one. Let's just eliminate it.
Okay. Are the trustees in agreement?
Yes.
Yes.
Monique, did Jen give you the next about the holidays?
I knew.
And I I completely forgot to bring it.
Because I wrote it down.
Yeah, I completely forgot to bring it. I'm sorry.
Um, I think she emailed it to me. Because she gave me a bunch of hard copies. Um, I have
I got, I almost have it written down here. I'm just, I'm writing it down right here really quick, so I'm sorry for forgetting that.
He wants to come back to it while you guys.
Yes, please. Yes, please.
So uh, the fire department shall receive two hundred dollar uniform.
I'd like to go up fifty more dollars. Uh, we'd that pay that two hundred dollars been there since chief pots were there and we've seen a drastic increase in the uniforms. Everything else is still based on the fulfillment of performance and at my discretion. But I'd like to see the fifty-dollar additional increase in uniforms.
I would agree with that. Trustees?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and I have just um three hundred hours. And then it's the Jen.
Okay. Okay.
I had three hundred.
So do we want to incorporate three hundred hours into that language or do you want to still go back?
Let me still go back and check. Let me, let me be thorough, go back.
Okay. And probationary members and those members not fulfilling performance standards will be compensated at the discretion of the chief. We're comfortable with that language still. Okay, um, I'm assuming we're all comfortable with the second or the next paragraph. Our fire chiefs association, okay? And the billing.
I have stuff here. Yes, oh, discussing billing. I have stuff here for you guys.
So I have, the first page I'm giving you is Medina County billing rates. Um, and the next one is a packet from uh Life Force Billing, who we use as our billing, which has said they suggest to see a increase in billing rates because they're seeing a large increase in billing across the United States through CMS. Um, they suggested rates in there. Um, if you go to this, I believe it's the second page that like or first page of Life Force packets. Um, no matter what, any increases still doesn't affect our residents as we soft bill our residents. So their insurance, whatever their insurance covers is what we collect from our residents. Um, but as you see on the
the the Medina County increase or what everybody else in Medina is, Littsfield is matching what they're recommending. Uh, I'm open for discussion. I know Brunswick Hills and Granger are looking at increasing it as well. They do not know what they're going to be increasing yet as they're, they have not had their organizational uh meeting.
Okay, so currently we have six hundred dollars for basic life support.
Yes.
And Hinckley.
Huh?
Why did they bump?
I, I'm assuming because of the maintenance of the vehicles and the fuel increase pricing is Littsfield matched these with what Life Force sent them.
So what are you proposing, chief? On the, on the basic life, let's start with that one since it's the first one in our minutes here.
Eight fifty.
Hey, I like, I'm I'm willing to go by the recommendation of Life Force on it as there is no increase to our residents, as I said, with the 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 soft billing rate that we do. And if the clock, you know, if the insurance is able to collect that, that's great, or the billing company is able to collect that from insurance, but there's still no uh, we're not sending anybody from our residents to collections or anything like that.
I mean, still impacts their deductibles.
Right.
Yes.
Jess, what would uh, what townships and cities did you reach out to in Medina County?
I did, I got the list. That list I sent you is what I got. Brunswick's Hills is looking at raises. I think they were talking anywhere from the hundred to hundred and fifty is what Chief Strazo was looking at. Uh, Steve Camps from Granger was unsure what they would be uh looking at increase.
So just as kind of a baseline that would be the line contracts for fire services. And this year we are fifteen thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars over our estimated revenue amount. So we're we're pulling in more.
This year was, yes.
At any given time. So annually, this year, we are, our budget estimated one hundred and twenty-five thousand and that includes mileage and the ALS and the BLS and the other LS.
ALS.
And our actual revenue is a hundred and forty thousand four sixty-one. Through the year.
No, no.
So we are generating more income as on these rates as they are right now.
Yeah, and the last time we overhauled these, I think was when I started in twenty twenty.
I believe so.
Yeah. So I I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with the recommended rates from Life Force. I think, hi, that's just my inkling. Trustees, do you have any?
I mean, it's astronomical.
Eight hundred and fifty dollars for six hundred dollars? And then they propose uh what is currently the ALS one or ALS. We have it at seven hundred. They are asking for a thousand. And then ALS two, we have it at eight hundred and they're requesting twelve hundred. And that really just
So these are their national averages. They didn't have anything. They did not have anything. No, no. I'd rather have seen that.
Well, I think that chief gave us local with the Medina County and surrounding area fee structure, so they they just don't coincide.
Yeah, thank you for providing these.
Not a problem.
That is helpful to find maybe we need to be in the middle.
Yeah, I I agree. The middle ground is is me and you talked today even about.
Yeah.
I I would, I get, my overall recommendation would be the BLS, ALS and ALS two, uh, an increase in a hundred dollars.
That's what I was thinking.
A hundred dollars, the um non-transport fifty dollars increase. And our mileage is at fourteen now, right?
So if you look in the second page of what Life Force sent, some of this is centered around cost of living and inflation factors that CMS is putting into place. So I think what this is doing is informing providers that they can get more money because now CMS is increasing what they're going to pay for this service. Maybe some places need it. Uh, you know, I'm not quite sure be different for levying in the past.
Right.
But you know, what, what do you need? We're not in this to be making
No.
Tons of money. And if we're already making over fifteen thousand dollars this year than estimated, that it should be moderation. They can always be increased from year to year. You need to have a good reason to be raising these rates, not that an insurance provider is going to pay more now for them. I mean, that's the problem with healthcare.
Right, what is, what is being, what are we, what are our expenditures out of that line, the contracted services line? But
None of this is a, this is a revenue.
Oh, okay.
Contracts for fire services and that's the line we put the revenue from the EMS bill into.
And then what does it go to?
Well, it goes to operations.
Okay.
Yeah, it becomes part of the twenty-one ninety-two whole revenue.
Okay. Trustees?
I thought, I mean, I thought it was high yesterday, but I told you.
Yeah, and I said we
Appreciate you look pulling the other ones because I think that's helpful to make the decision on. Um, if you raise by a hundred, you're still not even close to being the highest. Um, and you're also not the lowest.
No, and that's, like I said, talking to at least two chiefs today and yesterday. Uh, it sounds like that that's the kind of the ballpark they're going up to and we're almost matching them right now as well.
Yeah.
I wouldn't do a a flat one hundred on each one. I'd structure it more percentage-wise.
I just think that puts us in a weird predicament. Because if you look at the way that all of these are structured in Medina County, they're about a hundred off each other. And I think we were probably leaders in that a couple of years ago.
When we were, when when we, I think we start, we were actually on the lower side and and at the time some of the changes were from the the pots here where we were charging two different rates and it didn't matter because we were soft billing on that.
Right.
Um, as I said, I just wanted discussion to talk to see what you guys thought was fair and and it.
How often can you change these?
Whenever. Yeah, well, going through.
You don't want to make it too much because the billing company is billing out for this.
And it's not fair to people that you, to keep changing the rate either. You know, we don't want six months from now to say, oh, well, we're going to, we're going to reduce it fifty dollars, but the guy yesterday that was taken in was charged the whole extra hundred. Well, we can think about it and come back.
Sure.
Does that sound like a fair?
And then maybe I'll have some more of what other departments are doing is at the end of the year. Yep.
I have Jen sent it to me, Jess. Um, you want me to just go over it?
On what was that? What are you?
The holiday?
Yes, yes, I was writing that down.
All right. Um, so currently So currently. Uh, the firefighters are not paid for Labor Day or Memorial Day. And we'd like to see, um, well, they're paid, but they're not. I'm sorry, holiday. Thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
It does not volunteer that they volunteer their actual time. No, they are paid, not holiday pay. Um, so the proposed changes are for Easter. Labor Day, Memorial Day and Thanksgiving. Holiday pay from eight AM till eight PM. Right now you see that Easter, Thanksgiving. Is eight AM till 10 PM. So adding those four holidays in from eight AM till eight PM.
I have no problem with that. I just ask that we switch it so that they're in order to be Easter, Memorial Day parade, Memorial Day and then Labor Day.
That 10 PM was when we were doing, we weren't staffing around the clock. We were only staffing at 10 o'clock. So that's why we, we talking to the officers going, hey, this is kind of strange. And we're like, oh, it's from that timeframe of when we were only staffing till 10 PM.
Um, Jack, any comments or can I go on?
Go on.
Okay. Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. Eight PM until midnight.
Well, New Year's Eve right now is four PM.
Yeah, we're going to change it till eight.
Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, they're away from their families. We're changing it to eight.
She said eight AM to midnight.
No, eight PM till midnight.
I think it should be four PM, but that's just me.
Uh, Christmas and New Year's Day would be midnight till eight PM.
And that's what it is now, but Christmas is moving to the same setup as New Year's Day, right?
Yeah. Yes.
And Fourth of July would be eight AM till midnight. Right now it is eight AM. Until midnight. Oh.
It's just no changes on Fourth of July. Yep.
Yeah, I think your.
Status quo.
I think that New Year's Eve and Christmas Eve should be before PM. That's the only thing that I would. Like to see.
Can you repeat the New Year's Day and Christmas Day?
Yes. Do you want me to forward this to you Martha or just give it to you verbally?
Christmas Day is the same as New Year's Day now, 12 AM to eight PM.
Okay. And thank you.
You don't even afford it?
Yeah.
Is everyone in agreement?
Yes.
Yes.
And we're in agreement to do the eight PM for New Year's Eve and Christmas Eve, not four.
Yes, I am comfortable going with the fire chief's recommendations. He created these, so I support his decision.
I did, I talked to members too on it.
All right. So moving right along. Come back to billing.
Uh huh.
We've got a mileage of $15 per mile to be assessed. Reagreement on that to non-residents and residents for EMS transportation. Are you said you wanted to increase?
No, let's, let's keep the 15 at this, they're still the same.
Okay. Trustees, you agree to that?
Yeah.
Perfect. And, uh, Chief Sutner. We've got it 92,000 with five weeks of vacation.
I'm gonna go make a quick phone call. It's been blowing up.
You got it. Is there a recommendation for that?
Yes, he's requested, uh, in lieu of a increase. Additional vacation.
Of a week. That's fine with me. Trustee Astral?
That's fine with me. How many weeks does he have?
Six. And then we brought a motion, um, to keep the police salaries as per the union contract. Imagine that's document change. And, um, are we increasing these three percent as well? The. Non-union police members.
Yes.
I would say yes.
Yes. I think we should just do it straight across the board.
Okay. And then moving right over to Mr. Bahari, same.
Yes.
And service class level, service class two to record reflect a three percent increase. Townships being blanketed in. Mr. Bahari?
I would like to talk in executive session about it.
Trustees?
That's okay.
Motion to go on executive session, discuss.
Second.
Seconded by Astral. Astral?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Obviously, yes. And that is at 515, Mark.
Okay.
Second.
Second advice, Sweattick, Ashrell?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Augustine's a yes? I will give the floor to you. Let's just start it.
Okay. After the discussion, the executive session, I'd like to recommend that in consideration of the additional duties and skills and cost savings that have been realized through the service department personnel, that we give them a 2% adjustment to their rate on top of the regular increase.
Rusty Ashrell?
Yes.
You can have both.
I just want to make sure that she has, if she has comments, she has an opportunity. Do you have any additional comment?
No, agreed.
I think our service department is amazing. I think that they bring expertise that we've never had in Hinkley Township, and I value that. They do a lot to save our township funds and that they're doing things themselves instead of contracting out. And I think they are very deserving of the extra 2%. I just have a tough time giving it to one department and not every department.
Well, because of the additional duties and responsibilities.
I understand. I'm just saying my opinion. Okay, so the cell phone plan for the service department, the $25 stipend, monthly stipend, are we in agreement on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And moving right along, we have a uniform allowance. There was some information given to us in our packets. Are we going to make any additional changes to that? Do we have a proposal for a change? Are we going to keep it as is?
Is this the uniform? Let's put that one on hold for a moment.
Okay. To be come back to at the end of this meeting or to come back to at the organizational meeting?
I'm going to have a sit down with Mark.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect. On-site private event use of township fire and police vehicles at $15 an hour. Are we keeping that?
How much fuel you burn in an hour? More than 15?
No.
Okay.
It's rarely used. Martha, are we using this at all?
Okay.
We haven't done it this year at all.
More for the police.
Primarily is when the police do private duty for road work or an event. We are, we are going through the gasoline now, let me tell you. I'm sure you've all noticed the increases in that.
When the, when the police are at the elementary school or the middle, they're not at the middle school anymore.
No, it's only like say if Fetscho or someone asks for private duty on, on, you know, traffic.
Yes.
Or wedding.
They get to bring a car with them. The officer is getting paid by Fetscho, but the car is the township.
Okay.
I don't mean to use Fetscho.
No, that's good. The cost for the Eagle Scout applicant is typically about $500. I think that really hasn't changed. Do we have any issues with that staying at $500? And that's a reimbursement to the scout. Rusty Sweattick, any issues with that?
Nope.
Okay. We've got application fee for third-party planning assistance. The funds will be deposited, the zoning fund, any issues with that? This is if we hire a firm to assist us with our zoning. We haven't done that this year. We used to use George Smirgian or Smirglier. Smirian, yeah.
No issue.
No issue, okay. And then we've got bi-weekly payroll at the rates approved. We want an agreement on that. Fiscal officer is allowed to pay bills outside the regular meeting. We added that last year, but that's been helpful to you, Martha. Great.
Yes. Yeah, we signed one today on DPO.
And then the super blanket certificate to be made up. I don't, my screen's cutting off because I've got the zoom on here, but we don't have any issues with this, up to $50,000. Trustees?
Nope.
Very good. And I would imagine that all of this would stay the same as far as allotments for reoccurring expenses and the following limits to make purchases on behalf of the townships. Everyone in agreement?
Yes.
Very good. And it looks like the last one.
Yeah, I've got it. I was going to do it when she's done.
Okay. Do you have something to add because the next thing is liaison ships?
Yes. I wanted to add into the meeting, back in September, I had created that motion to create a general consensus of the terms of the post-94 CRA zone at 50% tax abatement to be reviewed annually and included in the January organizational meeting minutes I had in there. Just to take a general consensus every year at the organizational meeting so that, you know, if Bethany, Bethany knows what to, what to work with.
Okay.
So we were going to add that in.
That's fine with me.
I bet if I add it right after paying the bills outside the meeting schedule before we get into the.
That works for me.
Okay, perfect. Okay, and then the liaison ships. Does anyone have a preference about liaison ships going into 2023?
I'll keep what I have.
I think they should just stay the same.
Okay. So that is it for tonight. Suzanne?
With the change in the cemetery fee, in the past when we've made a change, we've had effective date listed where we allow a little bit of a time period before the increase actually took place. Want to add an effect to those changes?
I think that once the motions are made on the third, they would be effective that day. Agreed.
But you guys can set an effective date because you're changing them.
Okay.
So when we, in years past, when we've done that, we've given notice to people who might want to come in and, you know, a month or so and come in and get a, if, you know, say someone's saving enough money to buy five lots. And then all they, you know.
Okay.
Didn't plan on them being.
So do we want to.
So just add in an effective date.
First.
Is that fair? But you're the one who deals with the, is that fair, a month?
I think the last time we gave a couple months.
All right, so we'll do March 1st.
Okay, perfect.
And then just talk about, you know, let me just put it on the website, talk about it.
We can put it in the banner if we want.
Good.
All right, with that concludes the special meeting. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at 6:01 PM.
Second.
Seconded by Ashrell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.